From Mike Forte.
Yeah, we.
Let's see what we got.
Nope. Oh, yes, work, yes.
Does he work for you?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to have you sit back. You're gonna have to work that out with your employer.
We got it right here. What time do you have to be at work, Scott?
Um, I was supposed to be in front of the area about talking with Jamie Allen.
Good.
It's time we call the meeting to order. Is there anyone that would like to offer an invocation? Okay. Seeing none, proceed to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We're having some technical difficulties. Looks like they're about solved here. We'll have things as usual on the screen for you hopefully in a moment. In the meantime, one of this Farha family. One change to the agenda, I just know it kind of belatedly, but the action we have on the commission agenda concerning a deed from the land bank back to the city really needs to be done by you sitting as a land bank commissioner, not by you sitting as commissioners. So, we will, we prepare, we have prepared a separate agenda for that purpose. We'll take it off the city commission agenda after the city commission meeting adjourns. Then we will ask you to convene as land bank commissioners for the purpose of acting on that deed. And Stacy is in charge of making sure we don't all just forget.
Boy, that'd be a shame, wouldn't it?
After the city commission meeting. Other than that, there are no changes on you.
This time approval of the minutes from the April 5th, 2017 meeting.
We do have one correction.
Okay.
Where he has, uh, for the John Dear Moore, uh, seconded by Commissioner Sacco. I don't believe that was the case.
I think it was me.
I believe it was as well.
Yeah, that'd be right. That was correct.
You got the second sentence right, so.
I move that we approve the minutes of the April 5th meeting as corrected.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hash, seconded by Commissioner Sacco, to approve the meetings of the April 5th, 2017 meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. This time financial matters appropriation ordinance number seven.
Check number 1057605 to Shundal Pest Control. Is that like a yearly maintenance fee?
Yeah.
Or we have a problem somewhere?
No, it's yearly. It's, uh, it's yearly. We used to do it once a month. Now we've knocked it down to every other month, but it's for all the properties, almost all the properties.
Uh, check 64245, uh, employee garnishment. Is that, I know personnel, is that something we can visit about?
Because that would be, that would be an employee of ours whose wages are being garnished by a creditor. And so, we would give a garnishment order and then by law they're required to take that money out of the employee's account.
But it costs the city almost $500 to do that?
It's withheld by employees paying, so it comes through.
So it will come, okay, very good.
It doesn't cost us anything. It's the garnishment comes out of the wages and otherwise we're capable of doing more.
Thanks. I'll move to approve appropriation ordinance number seven. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Pounds and seconded by Commissioner Parker to approve appropriation ordinance number seven. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, at this time we'd like to open the floor to anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission. Going once. Going twice. Seeing none, at this time we will close public comments and move forward with ordinances. Ordinance 2017-3117, land bank signatures.
The purpose of this ordinance is to add to our recently enacted land bank statutes a provision regarding who's the proper, who are the proper people to sign a conveyance from the land bank, something that had been inadvertently admitted from the original legislation, from the original ordinance. And what it provides is that the mayor as chair of the land bank can sign and have it attested by the city clerk. As that, and that's how the deed that we prepared this evening is drawn.
That's something that wouldn't be done at the other agenda?
It will be done, well, we will actually do those actions at the other agenda, but on our city ordinance agenda, we need to pass this ordinance that says here's who can pack, who can sign a deed.
Okay.
Then that will, then it will make our proceeding later, uh, be within our ordinances.
We'll move to approve ordinance 2017-3117.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Hash to approve ordinance number 2017-3117. Any further discussion?
Okay, so this will be the signatures that's agreed to at the next, at the other agenda.
Yes, we'll authorize the signatures we have.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to 2017-3118, vacation of industrial park.
We do have a representative of Concordia Technologies LLC that's going to talk to you about what they're doing.
Good evening, James Hall here tonight on behalf of Concordia Number One LLC. We're the company that actually own the property where Concordia Technologies now is. It's just, one's the ownership and one's the operation. The reason that we're here asking for this tonight is that as we got ready to buy this, as we do with other properties we buy, we did a pretty extensive survey. And we noticed that on that, that there were just some cleanup items that actually needed to take place. And so, we went through that with our survey group and with our, um, design groups. And as we look at that, there's just some stuff, and we were at your planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago and went through it with them. There've been, as you'll see on the, uh, if you had, if you've had a chance to look at that survey, there were some streets vacated, there were some other things that were vacated. But what got left were like setbacks for streets that were no longer there. Yeah, there's the. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, all, but before we, before we finalize this survey. Yeah, it's not, yeah.
That's in the description too, that we got.
So we, before we, before we finalize this and make it part of our, our, our final, um, ownership documents, we just, we just wanted to clean this up so as, as we start talking about other options that we have out there, this part of it's done and we don't have to come into you guys and say, hey, we want to build over a uneasement or we want to do something over something that's, that's not even really needed anymore. So, that's, that's the whole reason we're here.
Now, the, it looks like that road functions generally as a road within the property. Is that accurate?
It's a vacated road and it is a utility was reman, when it was vacated, they retained, the city retained the utilities. And there is a major water line and a major gas line going there. We're not vacating anything related to that, any utilities. We're just, when that was platted, there was building setback line platted. These buildings aren't supposed to be built to that line to keep them off the street. So when they vacated the street, the building setback line, that's not anymore.
Okay.
Except to the private owner. And so now what we're looking at is, so just vacating that. Once they acquired all these lots, the property lines kind of became insignificant.
Sure.
They developed as individual business lots. But combustion engineering ended up with all of it, not this one. So.
So none of those easements are functional anymore?
They're all, right, it's, yes, yes.
This blue line represents a city, a pretty substantial city water main that's running through there. There's also a pretty substantial gas main that's running through there. So although this street is vacated, the utility easement remains.
Okay.
And that, that has to stay.
Okay.
What we're saying is there's other stuff in here that has, no longer has.
Sure.
Any relation.
No purpose for it.
Take that out.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No, I'll move to approve ordinance 2017-3118. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Pounds to approve ordinance 2017-3118. Is there any further discussion? The only question I would have is this, does this set any precedence that would be, uh, this is within?
If they find themselves needing some utility easements again, but they've got two more that, that are being used right now. But that would be up there and come in and decide how they want to, if they wanted to replat that whole thing, turn it into one big lot and put a, you know, but I think this will probably get pretty far.
Fair enough. I, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's, has merit. I just want to make sure.
Well, it helps. If they decide they want to build a building somewhere and they look at the plat and it says, oh, there's a utility there, we can't build there. Well, now they can. There's no utilities in it and it doesn't necessarily need it. The utility easements, when that was platted, are usually put along property lines so, because you usually keep your buildings off the property line.
Right.
That's why it was platted that way.
Sure.
Now the property lines are insignificant in this case.
Right.
So the utility easement is pretty much insignificant.
Fair enough. Is there any further discussion?
How will those have to be deeded back then?
No, they just are vacated.
No, they just get vacated. The ordinance has to be registered at the county and then when the legal description comes up, it'll say vacated easement, vacated.
Okay.
This gets you where you need to be.
Yes.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Things are going real well out there. We appreciate all your help.
Glad to hear it. Uh, ordinance 2017-3119.
For this ordinance and the related matters, we have what this is evening Todd Burris, the representative of George K. Baum and Company, our bond representative. And, uh, as you know from the packet, the bond sale has been completed. The documents we put in the packet weren't completed with respect to all the blanks filled. We only got those this afternoon. We'll have them on the screen for you as Mr. Burris makes the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert and Commissioners, for having me. Todd Burris with George K. Baum and Company. As Larry said, uh, we are the financial advisor for the city on your bond issues. You may recall back in March, I was here to present some information about the process that occurs when you're issuing bonds and kind of walked you through that process. And, uh, tonight I'm here to give you an update of what has occurred since then up until this afternoon. Kind of the, one of the big, um, items that has, that occurred a few weeks ago, we had, uh, a rating call with Moody's Investor Services, Amber and Larry and I. They assign a credit rating to the city, which has been attached to the bond issue. And it's something that's a prospective bond buyer, purchasers would obviously be very interested in. And, um, uh, they re, they release a report, they put together a report and release it, um, not only specifying what the rating is, which was A2, which is the same rating that the, the city had prior to this bond issue. Uh, but they also go through kind of the strengths and weaknesses of the, the city's credit and put together a report, which I have now and I'll, I'll send that to, I have the final draft. I'll send to Larry and Amber and they can distribute that to you all. But I thought I'd just go over a little bit, um, just an overview of what that report said. Like, again, it touches on the credit strengths and challenges, um, the strengths that they see with the city are stable financial operations. Uh, you have, uh, your revenues and expenses are pretty, um, pretty consistent year over year, which is something they like to see. Uh, that's a credit to, to you all, the commission, and also to Larry and Amber and how they're running the city. So, uh, they noted that as a strength and, um, you know, having healthy reserves and balances in, in your accounts is, was another strength that was noted, uh, that was included in the report. A couple of the challenges that they pointed out, um, the city's had a relatively small but declining population over the last several years. So that is something they noted. Your revenues, 64% of the revenues that the city has is either from sales tax or property taxes. And they just kind of noted that's kind of pretty concentrated just between the two, that there weren't a lot of other revenues coming in, transient guest taxes and other things. So, um, whenever there's kind of a concentrated, concentration like that, that's something that they'll, they'll note. One of the other things that we really get frustrated with, with ratings for our clients, they always seem to, they always point out that the, uh, wealth levels are below the national average. And we always point out to them and they, they agree with us that the cost of living in Kansas is a whole lot less than it is on the coasts. And, you know, they're comparing wealth levels and to, you know, here in the city to what they are throughout the country. And, uh, it's something obviously you can't control, uh, but it's always something that they note. So, again, that's one of the challenges that they've, they've noted in the report. So from there, what, uh, kind of the next step that in the process is, there's what's called a preliminary official statement, which I believe you all had a chance to, to review a few weeks ago. It's really just a, an overview of the bond issue amounts, what the project, you know, what the money's been used for. A bunch of obviously financial information for, for the city. And that information is distributed to prospective buyers as well. And then, uh, we set the date, the, the sale was actually today at 11 o'clock. Bidders were, had to have their bids in by 11 today. Do you have a copy of the results? The, the city ended up getting five bids, uh, for the bonds. Uh, there's a, a tabulation there of the five bidders that, uh, we received bids for, and that's about what I expected. Uh, Country Club Bank in Kansas City was the best bid. The tick is, is short for true interest cost, which is the interest rate that you're, you'll be paying on the, the bond issue. Uh, takes into account the, the rate, obviously, uh, the fee that the underwriter charges. And that calculation, obviously, the lower, the better for you all. And then you can see Commerce Bank, UMB, obviously out of Kansas City. Robert W. Baird is a, an investment bank that bids on a lot of competitively sold bond issues. And Stifel Nicolaus is a, an investment bank out of St. Louis. So, uh, we were expecting about four to five bids. We were very pleased with the results. Was not surprised that Country Club Commerce and UMB were very strong bids. They're usually on this type of structure, this size, uh, this rating, we see them very often as the top three bids. It's hard to pick what order, but it's usually, uh, those three and it just kind of depends on the bond issue as to which one is the best bid. So, uh, I'll kind of go just briefly through what the final numbers look like, uh, based off of Country Club Bank's bid. Go ahead, to the second page. So this is just a, you know, summary of sources and uses. Uh, the par amount of the bonds is $2,275,000. Uh, the reoffering premium is something I'll come back to. Those are the sources that you'll be receiving of the proceeds of the bonds. Uh, use of funds, the underwriter's discount, that's the fee for Country Club Bank, uh, to, to buy the bonds and then distribute them to the investors. So their underwriter's discount, that's their fee. Uh, cost of issuance would be our fee, bond council fee, the rating fee, uh, paying agent fee, which is the treasurer of the state of Kansas. The, the attorney general, um, in the state reviews, the transaction reviews all the documents and make sure they're, uh, in compliance with state law. So there's a fee for that. But obviously the big, uh, use of funds is the deposit to your construction fund. And that'll be used for the, the project and improvements to your water treatment plan.
What's the rounding amount? What is that?
And so when you issue bonds, you issue, issue bonds in $5,000 denominations. And there's always going to be a little bit left over unless you can hit it right on the, on the head. But, um, you'll always issue a little bit more than you need just with that $5,000 denomination issuance. And that money is, again, can be used either for project costs or to pay cost of issuance. It's money that you all will have. Uh, the next page is just the debt service schedule on the bonds. As you can see, uh, we start, the first interest payment will be November 1st of 2017 of $33,236.42. And then we start with principal and interest each year, uh, from 2018 through 2032. Uh, we were shooting for, uh, pretty level debt service each year, you know, kind of roughly 190, 191,000. With that $5,000 denomination, um, set up, you don't get exactly flat debt service payments like you would on your mortgage. But, uh, it's pretty flat, uh, nonetheless. It's, like I said, kind of 191,000, which, I was looking back at the numbers, but Amber and I had, were working on back in March, kind of what our estimates were of what the payments were going to be. And I was looking at the total principal and interest from those numbers back in March. And I was within $5,000 of the total amount. And actually this structure was $5,000 less than what we, what I showed you in March was. I'm not sure I'll ever get that close in my estimates in the, the rest of my career. So, it's kind of a lucky, uh, I kind of had a pretty good idea where the market was be, was going to be, but we're never usually that close as far as our estimates of what the, the payments, final payments will be. Uh, the, you go to the next page. Do you, well, we can look at this page too, the, you're like, the total interest or the percentage are you talking about the?
Maybe it's on the next page too. Do you have the bottom line net interest rate?
The, well, the tick there is 2.40. As you'll notice, that's actually slightly higher than what was on the bid results. That's your, basically your cost of funds. The reason it's a little higher is because we restructured the deal and I'll, I'll get into that here in a second when I go back to that premium amount. But all in with your, your interest rate and the, the cost that you're paying to, um, to Country Club Bank for their services, 2.4% over 15 years, um, obviously a very low rate. The, the rates have come up a little bit, especially since the election, uh, but still very low rates compared to, compared to where they've been historically. And, and so that, is that coming through? Okay. So, it, back to that premium, 137,973, you're probably wondering where that number comes from. And as you'll notice, there's a coupon and yield next to each maturity amount. Uh, most of the coupon, that's the actual interest rate, are 3%, other than the 30, 2032 maturity. And their bid, uh, well, let me back up. The yield is actually where the market is. If you were out buying bonds, especially on the secondary, uh, depending on which maturity you would be buying, that's kind of where that, the market is. And when Country Club put in their bid, they wanted rates, interest rates higher than where the market is. And in order to do that, they're willing to pay your premium for those higher interest rates, which is where you see the price, you see the 102, so for the 2018, it's 102.31. So it's 100, they're paying 102 cents on the dollar to get that 3% coupon rate. And if you add up all those, you know, that premium, it gets you to the 137,973. I don't want to drag you in the weeds on why they want a premium, because I could probably sit here for 20 minutes explaining that. But the net result is what we did with that additional premium was reduce the size of the bond issue. So, for the sale, we were, initially had a total par amount of $2,415,000. And when we got their, uh, bid with this premium, I re, I used that $137,000 to reduce the par amount of the issue. So now the par amount's only 2,275,000. So you're borrowing less at a little higher interest rate. So it's, it's pretty much a wash. Even if you issued, you know, the full 2,415,000 without the premium, you'd be issuing a little bit higher par amount at a lower rate. In this instance, you're issuing a lower par amount with a little higher rate. And again, uh, when I ran the estimate back in March, I was just using the full 2,415 at, without the premium. And like I said, we were within $5,000 with this structure compared to where my estimate was in March. So, I know it's confusing, um, it's, uh, but it's something that's very common in the market with interest rates being so low that buyers want a higher interest rate and are willing to pay a premium for that. So you, the city receives that premium and in turn we reduce the size, the par amount of the bond issue.
What's the strategic advantage of doing that?
What they will, one of the things they'll tell you is there's some protection for them if interest rates go up, um, you know, if the, you know, for the 2018, the current market's 1%. If interest rates start going up and that current market's 2%, well, there's, they have a little bit of protection that their coupon rate, which doesn't change, is at 3. That's what they'll explain. That's kind of one of the things they'll say to you. I, it's, it's kind of six of one, half of the other, dozen of the other, in my opinion, because you're paying extra, but, um, for that coupon amount. So, you're still getting, really what you really care about is that yield. That's your, um, return on your investment, kind of when you're factoring in the time value of money and your, and your pricing. Again, I could spend quite a bit of time explaining that more detail as to why they do that. But like I said, it's something very common that we see with this interest rate environment, with interest rates being so low that buyers are willing to take, pay extra for a higher interest rate.
But it truly is a wash in that.
Yeah.
This just makes it a more advantageous, opens it up to more aggressive.
Yeah, and as they hold the bonds, you know, you know, some of these that go 15 years, you may be holding these. There's a little bit of protection for them, you know, if rates start going up, which we all think eventually they, they will.
Kind of have to.
Yeah.
My question to our finance director is this, our $10 monthly fee, are we going to be able to handle these? I mean, that's great without that extra $5 a month fee kicking in?
Well, we want to start talking about that in budget time for the next bond, but as far as covering this one, yeah, we have.
We're good, okay.
These figures are very close to the ones that we showed you earlier in our projections, as Todd said.
And, okay, that's all I want to hear.
And so if you don't have any other questions, you have two items for consideration. Uh, the first is an ordinance which would authorize the, the sale of the bond, uh, the issuance of the bonds. And then a resolution which would basically lock in the terms of the, of the sale that we had today and, and move forward with the sale. We're scheduled to, to close on this May 8th. Uh, I would point out one other thing, uh, as part of Country Club's bid and they're required to submit what's called a good faith deposit to the city, uh, which was $48,300, which was wired to the city's account today. And if for some reason they don't show up for closing on May 8th, the city would keep those funds. All the years I've probably done over 100 of these types of deals, I've never had an instance where an underwriter did not show up for closing and deliver their funds. But it's something that state law requires and you have that money in your account. And assuming they show up for closing, that money gets credited toward, to them at closing and just nets out for what the amount of money they'll send to the city on May 8th.
Sort of our estimate almost.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move the said bid be accepted and that the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to execute the bid from, form selling the bonds to the best bidder on the basis of said bid and the terms specified in the notice of bond sale.
Second.
Are you sure?
It's been moved by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Hash that the mayor, that I and Stacy will be authorized and directed to execute the bid from Country Club Bank, selling the bonds to Country Club Bank on the basis of that bid and the terms specified in the notice of bond sale. Is there any further discussion?
The sale's been done, right?
Yeah, it has. So you're just basically accepting the terms of the results of the sale.
Right, but we already made the sale.
Well, we've taken, they've submitted their bids. It's not official until you pass the ordinance resolution, which locks in the rate, the terms and authorizes the issuance of the bonds.
Okay.
So hypothetically speaking, we could say no and start this process all over again and go back to the drawing board?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes to accept the bid. Finalizing those details. And now when we move on to our second motion, the ordinance 2017-3119.
I move to approve ordinance 2017-3119.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hash and seconded by Commissioner Sacco to approve ordinance 2017-3119. Is there any further discussion with this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
The actual one that we're on now is the resolution, not the ordinance. So this should be approved, the resolution 2017-2056.
Oh, I thought you just did the resolution.
Well, we said ordinance.
I'm following the instructions.
They both pinned up.
Okay. Now, moving on to resolution 2017-2056.
We'll all move to approve resolution 2017-2056.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Pounds to approve resolution number 2017-2056. It's prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bond series 2017 of the city of Concordia, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number 2017-3119 of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution 2017-2056 passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Appreciate your patience and explanation.
It's not complicated.
To some. Moving on to appointments, airport advisory board.
There are three seats on the airport advisory board coming to term this year that have come to term. We have three applicants for those three seats, two of whom are presently on the board and the third who has been an ex-official member of the board. The reason Mr. Puckett was an ex-official member is because the last time appointments came up, he applied and we had more, one more applicant, we had appointees. So he agreed to take that position and he's been attending meetings in that section since then. All three are recommended by the airport advisory board and by the staff.
Can I make my motion, accept all three?
Yes, you may.
I'll make the motion, accept all three.
You know, specify which three, just to be clear.
Luke Hood, Lance Link, John Puckett.
Lance Link and John Puckett. To the advisory board, airport advisory.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Sacco and seconded by Commissioner Pounds to appoint Luke Hood, Lance Link and John Puckett to the airport advisory board. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, designation of Cloud Corp board member.
This is something we discussed at our last study session. Cloud Corp advises us that the seat customarily held by a city commissioner on the Cloud Corp board needs to be occupied by one of you other than Commissioner Parker, who already has a seat of different capacity on that board.
I would move to designate Sam Sacco to the Cloud Corp board.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Commissioner Pounds to designate Sam Sacco to the Cloud Corp board. Anyone else want to do their name in the hat?
The board working with you, Sam.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to support for Blue Cross Wellness Grant.
As the last line of the memo says, this is our second attempt at this grant. If we were to be successful, it would bring half a million dollars into the community over a three-year period, part of which is spent on a part-time salary for administrator and the remainder of which is spent on expenses of doing activities and funding for various activities that are channeled through local merchants, organizations and people. And all of this is a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant. It has input from the Kansas Health Foundation and other kind of statewide related organizations. Last year, they gave away eight of these. This year, although it was for $100,000 less last year, this year, they will again give away eight. And the first round gets down to 15. This application is due on May 5th. The support of local organizations is a big factor in the scoring. 20% of the scoring goes to having the appropriate letters. I solicited them last time around with no problem and doing the same thing now. So that is the request today is that you signify the city's support for this position. No city money is involved other than, you know, we might incidentally do things like set up co that they want to have a walk or something like we do, haul some tables around like we do for other events. There's no match required for this. It's possible the city could be the grant administrator, but I think it's more likely the hospital will be. The sponsoring entity for this grant is not the city, but is the Cloud County Healthcare Needs Assessment Committee, which is a function of the hospital. And I'm also a member of that. So I don't know if we were successful last year, but a great deal of work has been done over this time this year to put us in a better position. I'll mention one of those things is that we hope to actually identify the person who would be the administrator and have them committed to taking the position. If we get the grant, you'll see an ad in the paper, a wanted ad about that tomorrow. And we will, I mean, I'm kind of putting the word out through channels. That's one reason I mentioned this. That would be a $25,000 a year, half-time job for three years.
I saw a notice of it to take.
Did you say part-time job?
Yeah, part-time job, yeah, part-time job, $25,000 a year, no benefits. I don't think that would end up being a city employee. That's possible, but if so, we'd be getting grant funds in to pay for it. So they're probably going to have to be somebody's employees so they can get 1099s issued. Might be us, might be the hospital, whoever it is. If you get this grant, they hit the bank with, I think, $50,000 right at the start so you start paying your administrator. So, and it's the kind of thing that I think is going to keep somebody busy, half-time. We do have several qualified people who've indicated an interest and they've all been notified. One, we would like to have an application in, which is Monday. We're rushing this a little bit because time is short, but so is the application process. So all we need is a cover letter and resumes. Just mentioning that this process is going on and is being made public so that anyone who's interested will have a chance to participate. So with that, I request that you authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support for our grant.
So is the hospital okay if they have the administration cost?
Them also is the same way. They wouldn't pay it out of their money. It would be money coming from the grant.
So it's whatever it falls into.
Whoever's doing it, the money would actually come, the grant pays the salary and it just has to be, it's going to have to be funneled through some entity in order to get 1099s or W2s done or whatever we're doing.
For the notice that I saw was posted by the hospital.
By the hospital, thank you.
So would this be more of a evening and weekend job?
They're looking perfectly for somebody who's got a half-time job now. That's kind of how they want to see it, so someone who would have daytime hours to devote for. And a fair amount of daytime hours, I'm going to guess. The way this starts off with a lot of input from the various advising boards, like Kansas Health Foundation, on how to set things up. We want you to do this and we want you to do that. When you meet all of their administrative criteria over the first six months or so, then they start handing out money for projects. And those projects include various things as described in the material that I put in the packet to you and has money going into the pockets of local businesses to help. And if you do everything you might do over three years, you get $400,000 to do that.
So if we were to not get this grant, then this person would not be.
Yes, and it's been advertised that way.
We'll all move to authorize the mayor to sign the support letter for the Blue Cross Wellness Grant.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Parker, seconded by Commissioner Hash to authorize the mayor to sign the support letter for the Blue Cross Wellness Grant. Is there any further discussion? I'm really hopeful, really optimistic that we stand a good chance. I think we're doing some good things in our community and, but still warrant the need for additional services.
We're able to list a lot of things that we've done. It's a competitive grant, but we've won competitive grants before. So we are certainly giving our best shot. And I know that has been a lot of support from the hospital administration.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to manager's report.
Let me note that we have our scout troop. What's the troop number?
Troop 38.
Troop 38 here this evening. I think for merit badge purposes, I offered to let them stand and recite the scout pledge, but they didn't really volunteer to do that, so.
They didn't do it? We talked about that one.
Yeah, it's, yes. But they're, nice to have them here and we appreciate the business. Reminder, although you received one, I think, earlier this week, we're actually, intergovernmental meeting next Wednesday, Cloud Corp. This will be an interesting one and I think it would be who was all to be there if we can. Waste water treatment plant pre-construction meeting took place on Monday of this week with Sarah Unra, the lead engineer here and the person who's going to be the lead person for the contracting, contractor doing the work. And locally, Jeremy and Tim and I participating. One of the among things we learned for that is it will probably be several months before they are doing very much that's visible out there. The first step is to order quite a bit of specialized equipment that we're going to have going in there, a grit chamber, this and that. So a lot, a lot of big-ticket custom manufacturing equipment takes time to get. They have placed their orders for those and this is all equipment that was specifically named and specified in the bids, so in the specs. So they have placed their orders, they're waiting back some complimentary material that they get from the manufacturer and they, and they actually order the stuff. So we're going to be getting calls for funds from this bond issue as those orders come up and probably going to wind down payments or whatnot. So we're going to start spending money out of there. Just a word on the process, which is a familiar one to us and is used in nearly all of our projects. Any payment we make will have been first authored, first requested in writing by the contractor stating exactly what it's for. Then that document is signed off on by the engineering company's inspector, who's up here watching the progress. BEC will have an authorized inspector here at all times if the contractor is working on the project. Then it's signed off by the lead engineer, Ms. Unra for BEC. Then it comes to us and we sign off on it and then it's packed. So before we put it on appropriation, it's been verified that parts have been ordered or the work's been done as the contractors ask for it. And then that proceeds with extreme formality throughout. So we're going to start seeing those probably pretty soon. Progress will be being made, you just can't see it. Speaking also of progress being made, we've been getting inquiries from potential bidders concerning a gas line to the planned new KDOT facility in the north development. And we're getting other communications from KDOT that indicate to us they are in the bidding process for that. So we're optimistic that Congas will have customer number two before much longer. Unless you have anything from me, that's all I have.
How is 18th Street coming?
We'll have that for you with Jeremy's report.
Thank you.
Let him comment on that, staff comments. Hey, Commissioner comments?
Couple. It was pointed out to me at church on Sunday about the potholes along Highway 81. Do we have a plan? I mean, I know there's a few south near Walmart and just as you come over the viaduct, there's starting to be a couple of good sizes there that maybe need to be dealt with.
Mike couldn't leave us this morning, this evening. He has talked to me about this. I know, I know there's a plan. I don't remember exactly what he said, but he knows it's out there and needs to be addressed for the various potholes around town after the, after the winter. He has plans and priorities all set up.
And I don't think we've heard anything about the horseshoe pits. I see we got a couple real classy, you know, horseshoe pits in there.
I didn't know they were going to do it, but they looked nice after they got the cement around them.
Do we have plans for tournaments or, I think at Fall Fest in the past, there's been.
Yeah, not yet. I just learned myself that we were getting the pits as well. So, yeah, I would like to.
You're right, I think.
Look good. Look good. Kind of like Amber and AIDS, good clothes.
I missed that discussion.
We, we talked about it a little bit. I think I asked Ron about it.
They're up in the corner of the park, this is where they're just south of Skate Bowl.
Okay.
And finally, I appreciate the arc on the floodplain, the historical view.
That was interesting, wasn't it?
Of how we in the center now are no doubt paying for what goes on on the coast and the hurricanes and no matter what we do, it seems like we're going to be stuck with it, so.
Yeah, that is to me, depending on how you want to look at it, but it's certainly a factor and we could, from our point of view, call it a fault is the risk for the floodplain is being spread naturally all through wherever there's a flood zone. But the overwhelming percentage of claims comes from a very small percentage of the actual properties covered. So, yes, so that's what's happening. This is a matter that I was able and privileged to address with Ashley's assistance through to the state field officer for our new congressman. And so they're aware of our concerns and how they relate to a lot of other cities around the state and they have a staffer who's kind of working on that. So, and I think they're probably not the only one, I think, that are being heard quite left and sideways. Interestingly enough, and I think the article mentioned this, the whole federal flood insurance program comes up for renewal in September. It's been kicked down the road a couple times. I'm hopeful maybe this time they'll take the occasion to change it in some way that might help us.
Let's hope so. That'd be good. Thanks. Yeah, thanks for that article. That's it, for me.
Been getting some complaints and concerns about the one-way traffic on Willow Street just west of the football stadium when you got cars parked on both sides. It's almost become a game of chicken. And I know we put some no parking signs on the curb, which sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. But I'd really like to put that, add that subject to a study session next time and discuss that because that's really a hazard when you can, you got two cars coming and they meet each other in the middle, who's going to back out first? And then you got to back out and you got cars. And then you got the back out and you got cars on both sides.
I think we probably can get it together for a study session next time because it has been talked about times before. And, you know, we have some plans drawn up for alternatives, so I think we can present that as a study session. Next time there'll be time to get it together for our next session. We'll try to do that.
Thank you.
I would definitely like to revisit that too, because I, I really wasn't satisfied with the solutions last time.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring it up again and see if we can do a better job this time. Speaking of study sessions, you mentioned at a recent meeting, I think the last commission, you'd like to see some alternatives on the pool as far as different ways you might do things or different features we might add. That's in the offer also. I was trying to get that done for you tonight, but it's in the works. We couldn't quite pull it together for this evening. But we're going to have some interesting options all the way around for you to consider and it's just kind of a matter of pulling it together comprehensively.
We probably won't get it for two thousand seventeen anyway, so.
No, it would be, no, it's too late now to really do anything. The pool's gonna be filled in about three and a half weeks, so. Uh, but we could get it to a point where we could do the work in the fall after the pool's drained.
Sure, good.
Do we do, uh, and Ron's not here, uh, weed and feed on the, like, the park, the parks? Cause like I, I was up by the city park today and I just noticed that we really have a lot of dandelions stuck. Do you know if they do anything to that?
I don't, you know, you don't, I think that they, I, I, I really would have to speak for him on that, but I know they do all the, you know, lawn control things. Okay, here's an expert. Uh, what do they do?
We usually take a spray for them.
Spray for them, okay.
Okay.
It's that time of year when, from now through June, they're gonna be chasing weeds and grass and dandelions and all that happens.
Yeah, they, you got a sprayer that goes on the, it's set in the back of the gator and, uh, like, we do take dry spray though.
Is that the same gator you guys use then later on in the year for roundup and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't have anything.
The only, the only comment I probably have and I know that it's really important, but I, I think that, uh, there was certainly some discussion, uh, back and forth, pro and against, about the merits of moving forward with the wastewater treatment plant, whether now was the time to, to make these improvements. From what we're seeing with interest payments, what we're seeing with that kind of idea, it sounds like that this might be about as good of a time as we're gonna find and probably better now to be proactive with it than to be reactive in a time when it might cost more for the project itself and then cost more to bond at that time. So I think that while this is a fairly significant expenditure, I think it's a good investment in the city and, and getting it for a pretty solid bond payment.
Oh, I got one other thing. I thought that cleanup was very successful. Uh, there was a lot of stuff that I saw moved, but I also see some stuff that people put out later or something and it's still along the streets.
Cleanup got interrupted a little bit because of some requirements, uh, at the landfill. Uh, again, Ron's not here to explain this, but we had to modify some equipment a little bit, so we are not done with the cleanup and some of it is getting to look a little, a little bit ragged.
Yeah, Ron told me it'll be at least this week.
I think they had to make provision to put some tighter tarps on or something. Uh, so, yeah, they'll get back to it pretty quickly. Uh, but that's why some of it's been left sitting, uh, the process got interrupted. We do appreciate people's putting it out. Hopefully everybody who likes to scavenge from the cleanup has had plenty of time to do that.
Thank you.
I'd love to make a comment, but it's probably inappropriate. Moving on to staff comments. Usually you guys are arm wrestling to get up here first. This is-
As Larry mentioned earlier, the state's out there on their maintenance facility, but they're getting, they're, they've been doing activity out there, doing some filling things, but they'll be, they'll be building their yard. I think that the, I was informed by the architect that they will not be building the maintenance, build the office building probably till next year or the year after, but they're gonna get all their maintenance equipment centralized here. That's their goal is to get that and it's a fenced-in area and, and now they're gonna have cars, I guess, for their maintenance workers going out of, so it's a secure site and all that, but. That and then down on First Street where the fuel tanks are with the detail shop we tore down, I see a dig save come through for that today for the well monitoring. But they told me a month, two months ago that they weren't gonna put the monitoring wells in until they remove the tanks and they haven't removed the tanks yet. So I gotta call them guys tomorrow and see what's going on, but you might see some activity around there too with some more shovels, so.
Can you give us update on Eighteenth Street?
Eighteenth?
See, Jeremy, I just thought you were watering.
Eighteenth Street is, they got the water main powered up and they're just, they're on standstill right now because they have to wait till bacteria samples come back. Then they'll be able to flush it and start making service line connections.
How long would that take to do the service line connections?
Well, there's forty, forty service lines and he thinks he can do three to four a day, so within the next month. With the weather.
Have you walked any more sidewalks lately?
I haven't, no.
Oh, okay.
When, you know, I know Ron's not here, but, but when are they scheduled to then start on the actual road there? Do you have any idea?
Well, they said that, uh, the street part of it, they wanted to come in and start doing some of the storm drains. So they were gonna, the water guys were gonna try to get done with those services around the storm drains first so they could come in while the, the water guys were still here. So they might be on top of each other for a little while.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I just have a couple of things. I, last time I reported on baseball and softball, sign-ups were kind of in full swing. Deadlines have come and gone. We've had the draft meetings. We had a second draft meeting for the Pee-wee baseball because we had some concerns about not enough kids in the older age group playing in the A, on the A teams. There was some concern about bringing nine-year-olds or eight-year-olds or younger kids up, so, uh, we had a meeting last night and it was discussed, uh, going to, uh, we had a couple of options, but what the coaches decided to do is we went to four, uh, three, uh, excuse me, three, three divisions of four teams. Older, middle, younger. Younger one will play coach pitch and then we'll play player pitch in the other two divisions, so, um, kind of, I think that's, that's the best number, the best, uh, situation for all the kids involved. Then on the girl's side, we made a decision to introduce pitching machine league to the younger kids because we struggle every year and it's everywhere I've ever been. It's a struggle to get girls that are able to pitch, so that kinda gives them a transitional period to, to do that. Another bit of good news is our T-ball teams are up, uh, two teams, so we have about ninety-six kids in the T-ball program, so we had to add a couple of teams.
What age level is the T-ball?
Five-six.
So I like your softball clinic that you're putting up.
Yeah, and we've got the free softball clinic set up, but, yeah, so, again, that's an attempt to kinda develop pitchers because it's, um, you know, lots of dads played baseball, but fewer gals out there played fast pitch, so there's just not a lot of instruction, so hopefully we develop some pitchers. So that's how I am.
Fire department's been pretty busy. We're fourteen calls up from last year, year-to-date, so we're staying pretty busy with that. We got an A E M T class starting Monday here, which will give us some more advanced A E M Ts, so we'll be able to do some more life-saving stuff there. All the A E M Ts and paramedics are now certified PALS, which is pediatric, advanced life support and advanced life support for adults. And two of us are now instructors for that. We'll be having another T E C C, which is the tactical medic training here May sixteenth and seventeenth. So the blue house will be getting used again in a lot of activity there. And we're-
Did we just burn it down or?
No. Right now, that's a great asset for us to train on.
We didn't do that.
We went to a couple places. I was in Goodland this last weekend doing classes and it's extremely hard to put that class on without a facility that you can go in and practice in, so. We were also successful at getting a grant. About a year ago, I came and talked about a ventilator grant. It's through the Board of EMS, so it's fifty-fifty grant of forty-three, four, four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a piece. So we'll be getting that hopefully by August, so. That's all we've got. Unless you guys got any questions?
The only, I mean, you being up here maybe wanna think, we, uh, heard from someone recently just talking about their community's fire and EMS and, and some of the frustrations, the struggles that they were experiencing there and it, it made me just that much more aware of how, how much we value the work that you and your, your folks do. Uh, kinda something that we don't, I mean, probably take for granted a lot, but appreciate all the hard work that, that y'all do.
Well, it's not just us. Um, the business owners and stuff that let the volunteers go is a big support. I mean, we've got paid staff and we're benefit for that, but we couldn't do it without the reserves of the volunteers and that comes back on employees letting them go to the calls.
You probably saw the newest edition of Kansas Government Journal on social media. It's Broadway Plaza and the article is not just on the plaza, it's on a lot of other projects like that around the state, but it's like three or four paragraphs, but I'll have copies for you next time.
Yeah, I didn't know if you'd already sold out the first copies and you're waiting to get new ones.
They order extra, but they give us ten copies for being on the cover too, so.
Excellent. I was excited to see that.
Yeah.
Last night I attended a town hall meeting in Glasgow sponsored by the Clyde County Chemical Dependency Committee. My part of the program was to talk to the students about the legal ramifications of underage drinking, underage driving and insurance, by the way, I threw that in. We had a speaker that had gone to that high school and started her drinking then and, and she's currently in recovery. And the balancing program and the activities, uh, were conducted by courage counseling.
Was it well attended, chief?
Sir?
Was it well attended?
Uh, we had about a dozen students and, and about a dozen adults total.
That's probably not bad for-
Yeah.
Any other staff comments? At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn to a study session?
Do we need a study session or do we need to do?
Well, you might, I think, I didn't know we will have a study session, but just adjourn to, uh, or a, a land bank meeting, how's that?
I move that we adjourn to a meeting of the Concordia Land Bank.
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Parker to adjourn the meeting for land bank board. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. At this time, I would call to order a meeting for the Concordia Land Bank Board. At this time, open up the floor for any public comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move on to new business, talking about the land bank deed.
Thanks for coming, guys.
You might have this up on the board in a minute. You've seen it in the packet. Uh, the purpose of this deed is to transfer from the city's land bank to the city's name, two pieces of land that were transferred into the land bank last year. Both of these pieces are adjacent to the airport, one on kind of the, uh, southwest corner of the airport grounds, one opposite that, kind of the northeast corner. Do you have the map that's in there?
It's on page, yeah, thirty-three.
So it would be this piece right here and this piece right here. Some of the major tracks we bought for airport expansion. This piece, you can see if, if and when, uh, the airport expansion program is put in, a north-south runway will occupy this space and then the blue parts out here were needed as easements fly over, but the, actually would be runway on, on the land that we're talking about now. So that's why we bought that one and then on the same way out here, if we built a new runway, it would be going out in here, so that's why we bought this piece of land. In both cases, we bought a little more land than we needed to for the convenience of the landowner and with the agreement of the FAA who paid for ninety percent of all purchase prices. This land was then taxable land, uh, as the end of twenty-seventeen approached. And in order to avoid paying property taxes on it, we acquired it in twenty-seventeen. I transferred it into the land bank before the end of the year. At the same time, before then, I had filed a request for tax exemption with the Board of Tax Appeals for this land. I was pretty confident it was gonna go through, but it hadn't by the end of the year. So after the end of the year, we got the ruling, which is in the packet from the Board of Tax Appeals, that this land is tax exempt anyway because it's being used for public purposes, like the whole rest of the airport. It's not, it doesn't have to pay property taxes. It's better for future administrative convenience to put this land in the name of the city and in the name of the land bank. One reason is every five years or so, the FAA asks for a formal title opinion from the city attorney that says, here is the land that the airport owns and it's all for you clear. And that's easier to do if it says, all the deeds say City of Concordia. So that's why at this point, since it's gonna be exempt outside the land bank, I'm asking you to transfer it out of the land bank, back into the city's name. No money's changing hands, no real ownership changes.
So what kind of, uh, motion do we need? Just a-
Motion to approve deed transferring property from land banks.
I would, I would move, uh, to authorize the deed transfer from the Concordia Land Bank to the City of Concordia of the specified property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Been moved by board member Parker, second by board member Pounds to adjourn. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, don't we need to, on signatures? Oh, you need to have authority to set, signatures and assign that back?
We already did that earlier.
We did the name.
Uh, the ordinance we passed earlier says that the chair of the land bank was-
Okay, okay.
We're gonna have a study session?
Yep, we might adjourn to a study session.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that we adjourn to a study session.
So it's been, motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting of the Concordia Land Bank is adjourned. We are now adjourned a study session for a utility department vehicle.
I'll let Jeremy speak to you as far as specs and the selfie.
Toby, at work today, I was telling them how I was petting my dog Toby. But they, I don't think they caught the dog part, so they were asking if I was petting Toby and Oscar and it was kinda humiliating.
For you or for Toby?
I didn't wanna go there. Too ripe for comment. Sit back and let that float a little bit.
Before, before we get to the specs, I'll just note that the background in picture is ready to point here, so if you please want it. Uh, and the truck we're talking about is the one that got stolen and then we covered up it, right? It's not?
No, I thought we covered that one.
See, I already did that one. Yeah.
Yeah, we blocked that one, all right.
Well, I just learned, don't send Stacey, Stacy a selfie picture or else it ends up in the packet.
She's doing her duty. She'd be remiss and not giving us all the information we need.
You never need enemies if you have coworkers.
Okay, uh, here's the spec sheet for, this is a, replacing the nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-nine Ford F-150 that sits outside here. It's mine, the one I drive. It has developed major problems. It's now leaking gas out of the gas tank and mechanic says, how many cans orms do you wanna open? So. It's got, it has problems.
Eighteen years, that's-
Yeah.
How many miles?
Had a good one. Eighty-four thousand, so it's three hundred thousand.
Does it have any value? Trade-in value?
I don't know yet. Maybe five hundred dollars, I would imagine, if I-
Well, any bet helps.
Yeah.
What's that?
Any, any bet helps.
Yeah, yeah. But what will happen is all- But what will happen is I'll, if I can get a new vehicle, I'll give the new one and put it out with the crew, and I'll take one of their old ones, which will be a two thousand and ten F-150. And here's the spec sheet. I wanted to, uh, bid a four-wheel drive, 'cause we do need one four-wheel-drive vehicle out there. And a short bed, that's actually a redu- reduction in price if you bid a short bed. Really don't need long beds.
Okay.
If you have a long bed, you just put more stuff in. And I, uh, went down in motor size to a V-six, which is a fifteen-hundred-dollar cheaper motor than a V-eight. We, we have a V-six vehicle running around now. It's the well operator's truck, and it does great. So the, the new V-sixes are comparable to the V-eights.
Are you putting out for bid yet?
No. This is, no, I am. If you approve it, I will, so.
Well, I can't approve it until I see the price.
Well, if we're seeing the process, our first step by, by, our policy is to show you the-
Sure, I understand.
So we're asking you to review the specs.
I did go to Chevy and Ford and ask about the V-six, if they both could provide a V-six, and they said yes, in the short bed and the four-by-four.
When you're talking to them, well, I'd like to know. Also, when I give you the bid, see, see what they give on the, uh, the old one?
Yeah, it's in here with trade-in and without trade-in costs, so.
Jeremy, do you, I see it's got the tow package. Uh, do, do we, do you use the tow part?
Yes, every day almost.
So, but you're confident that the V-six will, will carry it?
Yeah, yeah. The, the V-sixes for a Ford motor is, they're rated at two hundred and ninety horsepower, and that's like sixty or eighty horsepower more than the V-eights of ten years ago.
Yeah, they're-
Did you budget for this this year?
It's in your equipment area.
Okay. I'd like to have a wider discussion about bid specs, so we don't get into the big discussion we had last time. 'Cause if you get somebody that, that comes up with a much, much cheaper product here, but isn't what you want, I don't even think we need to see that. If, if we as a group here come to consensus, 'cause we can't vote officially here in this execu- in this, uh, study session, if, if we have a vendor that comes in with something that's not even close, I think we should just give that back to them and say, forget it. You know, we're, let's spend our time looking at what you want and, and what you've budgeted for, and what we are agreeing to as far as specs are concerned. So, is our, does our, uh, bid procedure speak to that? I think I asked you to-
And it was followed at the last meeting concerning on Mars. Our bid procedure says that we are to bring you all bids received.
All bids received, even though they don't ma- what are we doing this for then?
Yes, well, well, we're showing you our specs, and we certainly make our recommendation based on specs as, as we did at our last go-round, and that's, but our policy says all bids received.
So what, but I think what, what my concern was, and then not to rehash it all, but, but this says engine three-point-five-liter V-six or an equivalent. So, so who has the three-point-five-liter V-six?
Ford.
What's Chevy's V-six?
Four-point-three.
So if you say four-point-three-liter V-six without the equivalent, then the-
Then you're bidding out Ford.
Exactly. So, so when we're lining out specs, I think it's a lot more important to spec out the, the task at hand as opposed to the very specific tasks of a very specific piece of equipment. Now, maybe that that's the very specific piece of equipment that you need, but if, if Chevy's four-three and, and Ford's three-five, and so let's say you put this bid out without the or equivalent, then Chevy doesn't meet the bid because, well, it doesn't meet specs 'cause it's a four-three, and we're asking for a three-five.
Yeah, but if somebody submits a one-point-o, why do we need to look at it, you know?
I agree with the one-point-o, so yeah, if he's, if he's recommending, if, if somebody bids in like a, a three-and-a-half cylinder truck, let's not do it, but if it's, if it's a four-three and we're getting a three-five, that's close enough to say this makes the sense to do it.
Well, what happens if, uh, Chevy decides they don't want to bid a V-six, they bid a V-eight?
Well, if, at that-
That's an equivalent of a, but it's not what I asked for.
Well, it comes down to price as far as what-
Yeah.
Right, and if a V-eight will be a more expensive one.
If, if the Ford, if the, if the Ford V-six was tw- twenty thousand dollars, and the Chevy V-eight was twenty thousand dollars, and I'd say, okay, well, with equal money, what do you want? If the Ford V-six is forty-five thousand dollars, and the, and the other V-eight or the other V-six is twenty thousand dollars, then, then I think we would have a discussion as, what's the equivalency here, and is, is the, is the increased money worth the yield?
I agree, if they're close. But I think last time, we, we weren't even close.
No, we went for the much more expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah, but at the same time, we-
We weren't close at all.
We were gonna have to add another, you know, employee.
Yeah, but-
So, yeah.
No, we weren't.
And buy two mowers, so.
Not that this has really anything to do with you, Jeremy.
No, it doesn't.
Are you, are these okay?
These specs are fine.
Well, I think we learned a hard lesson that this is actually the more important part of, you know, making sure the specs are-
Right, when we approve the specs.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the thing is, on a vehicle, it's more broad, well, no, that's not the word I'm looking for. Uh, there, there, there's a lot more room for error when it comes to a, a piece of equipment versus a vehicle, 'cause vehicles are kind of standard, and I like the fact that you're doing pretty much, you know, there's no fancy stuff on there.
Well, and I really appreciate that you're, you're not taking this for you. I mean, that you're passing it on down the line to be a work vehicle, and you'll take the, I mean, I really, I appreciate that personally, and I appreciate it professionally.
I think you should drive a go-kart myself.
Give me one, I'll drive it.
So we, we reached consensus here that these specs are fine.
Some considerations go into this process while we're talking about specs is that, uh, in making them, we need to be conversant with what really exists, obviously, and we try to be conversant with what should be purchased locally, 'cause we pay very close attention to that part of our purchasing policy, purchase locally, all everything equal or roughly equal. Uh, and so, uh, we have been accused in the past of going out and picking out what car or truck we want, and then writing the specs accordingly, but we really try not to do that, and to order something that we know in advance some variation of can be bought locally. Uh, and, uh, then also that could get you in a situation where we, we know what in our minds type of equipment we need, and then you have to have reference to the market on that, uh, as you put the specs together. But then I think the idea that we bring you all bids, uh, is precisely to leave it open for discussion.
I would appreciate that.
We get surprised sometimes by what we get, and so rather than make the political decision to turn that down, or, well, we could do it. We could make that an administrative decision, and then, but then what happens if it's a little bit off? Uh, but, uh, so I think by and large, although we occasionally get into disagreements about what to do, that's better than not giving you the information time after time.
I think, I think a spec that would have been helpful with our, our last vote would have been mower capable of mowing X amount of space and X amount of time, because then we would have had a, a, a much more quantifiable metric to say, no, we don't need to hire somebody else. This mower is gonna be able to do the same job in similar amount of time, or it's very clear that this reduced width is going to add additional staff cost. Because that, that would have been a general spec or general ballpark that would have been much more helpful. If, how, how good is this piece of equipment gonna do the job?
As a crucial part of considering, I guess, the time to bear down on that is with the benefit of hindsight at the time you're looking at the specs. But we are, we are always looking forward, and we don't know that somebody's going to make some other offer. When they do, then you are getting the benefit of advice from the most qualified person we have on our staff as far as what they think they need, but then it's up to you to decide what we get. Uh, so it's, it's easy to say in hindsight, we should have looked at the other bits specs, but that's hindsight.
But I think we can learn from that and take that forward.
A piece of equipment or vehicle is, can it do the job that we want it to do it? And versus specs, because it could be someone comes in with less specs, but okay, will this do the job? Yes, it will. And is the cost justified?
I think our department head said that wasn't gonna do the job.
No, it didn't.
Yes, he did. You put him on the spot, said, how many hours is it gonna take? And he stumbled, stumbled-
And he couldn't answer me.
Well, yeah, because, because he didn't figure it that way, 'cause he's gonna have to add another-
But, but the basis of our decision was made upon whether it would take more staff power. The, the reason we went with the mower we did is 'cause it was thought that that mower was gonna save us in staffing costs. And so if we had that as a metric to use, it would have better guided that decision.
Let me add that another factor we get into if we're not specific enough, 'cause I tried doing some of this real general, and then you get them coming back to you, well, we don't know what you want. Uh, so it's hard, harder than it seems to do that, but it's something we can take a look at and see if we can identify times where we can say, okay, can we define this by task and then see what we get?
I, that, that thing is gonna give us a better idea of what we're really shopping for.
But on something like a pickup, you know, we kind of know.
And Larry- They're close, that's fine. They can't be- You made a comment that, that, uh, sometimes we might get accused in the past of, you know, bid, doing the specs for what, you know, it's real easy for, for the public to say that. I mean, but they don't necessarily really know.
Well, I think we do a pretty good job of hiring the experts that need to make that, those recommendations to us. And when they've made those recommendations, I think it's really important for us to listen to those recommendations.
Right, 'cause it goes back to the, the budget building process.
Yeah, it certainly does, and when they have to hire another person to mow for another three hundred hours over the summer, it certainly does impact the budget.
Budget, budget record. Anyway.
If that was established.